So, I call to order the Zoning Board of Appeals' May 18th meeting. It is 7:02 PM and the first agenda item is Thompson hearing. So, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, in acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May 18th at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon petition of Mark Thompson. A special permit is requested under 6.1.3 and 7.4 for a 12 by 12 expansion to an existing deck which is located in the side setback on a pre-existing non-conforming structure located on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property site is 4 Hollis Ave and is owned by Mark and Beth Thompson. So, I'm gonna read a couple of memos into the record in regards to this petition. We have one from the Lakeville Board of Health. We received a copy of the petition for 4 Hollis Ave. The Board of Health has reviewed the plot plan proposed deck dated 4/12/23 for 4 Hollis Ave which shows the existing septic tank three feet from the proposed deck. Plan does not show the location of the footings to support the deck. Please either provide a location of the footings or ensure that the footings are greater than five feet from the tank. The Lakeville Board of Health Regulation 2.4 requires this. No structure, like sonotubes, decks, sheds, etc., shall be within five feet of any component. Applicant needs to conform with no footings or sonotubes to be within five feet of the existing septic tank prior to building or request a waiver from the Board of Health. Should you have any further questions, please feel free to contact this office. We also have a memo from the Planning Board dated May 12th. At their Thursday, May 11th, 2023 meeting, the Planning Board received the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. Those are the only two additional memos we have for this request. Who's here on behalf of the petition?
The owner, Mark Thompson.
Okay, Mark, why don't you come on up to the podium there? And it looks like you're basically just gonna add on to the existing deck that you have, correct?
Correct.
So, I guess you have anything else to add to that?
No, I understand the Board of Health's concerns. I can accommodate that. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, do you know where the sonotubes are gonna be at this point? Are you going?
Yeah, they gotta be inside the deck, not outside, which would bring it within the five feet requirement.
So, it'll be outside of the five feet, okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions? I will comment that I noticed based on the diagram that we have, the existing deck you're putting on. Add two, you already have a deck that is within the setback.
It's entrance way to the side door.
Right, and that's already 11.7 feet from the side boundary. This one is going to extend further to, looks like the, the front of the back.
The rear, it looks like?
To the back of the house, so, but the setback isn't gonna be any more than the one point, anymore inside of the 11.7.
No, exact same. It's gonna be flush with the face of the existing.
You've already created a new setback. You're not gonna be any more imposing, so. You even have an existing shed that's well within the setback for the back on the property, so. Any comments or questions from the board members? Anyone in the audience want to comment if they have any questions? Okay, who's up? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'm making a motion to grant the petition. As we oppose, maybe with the condition that the Board of Health requirement not to be inside of the five feet.
Absolutely. Five feet of the existing septic. Do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. That was easy, huh?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Kathy, you wanna tell them what the protocol is?
Sure, we have 14 days to do the paperwork and it's submitted to the town clerk. From then, she's been suspended, there's a 20-day appeal period. There's a 20-day appeal period. If there are no appeals, then we'll call you in to come pick it up. You can go, yeah, or an email. Then you go report at the Regisiativ Beads and bring the receipt to the building department. So, 34 days.
You're welcome. Good luck. All right, next agenda item is the Ronald W. Darling hearing. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May 18th at the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Ronald W. Darling. A special permit is requested under 7.4.6 to construct a 12 by 20 garage that would be within the setbacks and would be located on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Property site is 13 Dunbar Road. It is owned by Ron W. Darling and Patrice Grady. We have a couple of memos to read into the record regarding this petition. Let's see, from the Board of Health. We have received a copy of the petition for hearing at 13 Dunbar Lane. Board of Health has reviewed the special permit plan dated 12/8/22 for 13 Dunbar Lane, providing that there is no living space on the proposed one-car garage and the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed garage. We also have a memo from the Planning Board dated May 12th. At their Thursday, May 11th, 2023 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. Okay, I'm assuming Mr. Darling is here to, why don't you come on up and tell us what you're looking to do, sir?
Actually, I'll just put together the stock and hang it on the engine. I knew that you guys were interested.
Yeah, I wanted to distribute him. The original stamped one? The original stamped one, give it to me, I'll give it to Kathy, she'll put it on record. Or in the file, I'll say.
Is this the same one? I think I might have the same.
He may want to brief us through, because I was asked by the town planner, I believe, to get some information for him. And it's up on the top corner, so, he go. Sorry, I wish I was a computer savvy kinda guy, but, sorry, stop it, buddy.
Mark copies.
I just wanted to put it on the back just so you could kinda see what my area risk does when you actually talk about the thing. And it kinda sounds more funky than it really is.
I think you need to cover the mic.
So, I guess, at the end of the day, what I have is I purchased the house, bought all the house that tore it down. It was the old dilapidated cottage and built another house. But this house has actually become my permanent home, a full-time residence. And obviously, it's a small lot, kind of, kind of a few issues that make it hard for me to kinda live there, but some of the problems I do have, obviously, with it was my septic location, my, you know, proximity to the porch, grade behind the garage, there's a well there, the lot size, and all of that. So, essentially, essentially, I have the engineer, when I did my house, just kinda draw this up so that at least I had an idea what I could do down the road as time went on. And while time went on, now I'm standing in front of you looking to try to, try to accommodate myself with this. I really have no storage. What I have is a two-bedroom house. I have, obviously, living space, whatever, and I have that house. So, I just need to kind of expand this to, so I have a motorcycle and a car, basically, that I need a place to cook. And that's, that's about what it is. I did, when I built the house, I did have to take down what storage shed was there. There was a storage shed, I think, well, if you're looking at the house to the left, right on the property line, there was a storage shed. It was like eight by 10 or something like that that had to be removed. So, that did get removed and we moved the, this proposed thing to where it kinda fit the best and, you know, kinda moved it off of that property line, brought it over towards the front. It doesn't really, I guess evidently, it doesn't meet the setback for a couple, one spot and then the twelfth part of the front, so, that's what I got.
So, I have a question in regards to the structure itself. Is there going to be electric and/or plumbing run out to it?
No, no. I mean, if I can, if I can, I would probably put lights out there, but this is gonna be just for storage. There's not gonna be a second floor. It's gonna be actually, you know, slab on grade. To be quite honest with you, in my opinion, this 12 by 20 is pretty much a shed as it is, you know, it's not very big. But again, that's, that's what I have to work with, so. There was, you know, obviously, you know, trying to move it around or whatever, and I spoke to Brad, the engineer, and there's just really nowhere to go. If I try to go back, the porch is, the corner of the porch is there and the grade goes down on the back, so, becomes kinda difficult, so, I'm kinda in a rock and a hard place.
I do have a question. Could you spin the garage a little bit to get it farther away from the lawn, right?
I did ask the engineer that and if I, if I tried to move it, I think, and I asked him today, you know, if I try to move it one way, it goes closer the other way, out of that nine feet, it takes it away from there. If I spin it, it brings it closer to the shit, to the corner of the porch. Yeah, there's not really too many places to go with it, but, you know, and I just kinda wanted to, you know, show you a few places, like, you know, with the front corner of my house where that roadway comes through, you know, that kinda cuts off some space off of my lot to try, you know, there's not really room like a septic system there. You know, and also, I did put a picture up so you could kinda get an idea of how, how the actual thing is laid out, you know, but it does show it close to the property line in the front, the 12 inches to the property line, but if you actually look at the roadway, it's set way, way off the roadway. The biggest problem is it's within that 12-inch zone.
I take it the road, if this is the layout of the roadway, so, where Dunbar goes through it?
Yeah, that, yeah, it's that, yeah, if you look at the plan, yeah, it comes, that's the roadway that comes in and it goes around the corner and actually cuts, obviously, to everybody's, you know, property, so, I mean, it is what it is, everybody uses it and kinda, you're kinda living in a, in a everybody gotta get along community and, you know, people are, you know.
Have you ever thought of attaching the garage to the house?
You know, financially, I just, I did the house, you know what I mean? I don't have that kinda money and basically, as I said, I can't put a full foundation. I, you know what I mean? This is about the best I can do. This is probably at my limits with dumb stuff, you know, spending the money and I really would hope that, I mean, I asked, again, the engineer, you know, what I could do, what would probably work the best and, you know, that is that. At some point, maybe I could've done a garage under or something, I don't know, but that's kinda, you know, I don't know.
Could you clarify for me the proximity of the garage to the road? I mean, is that the one-foot setback or?
It's like 14 feet.
I'm trying to like orient myself to where, I see the road, but then I.
Yeah, well, no, the one foot is off of the property line with, and this is, I'm not an engineer or whatever, I'm just kinda going by what I was explaining to me. So, the garage is one foot off the property line, but it's probably 14 feet from the road, so there's plenty of room to go in and out of that garage.
If I can look at your picture here?
Yeah.
Like, are you saying where the storage unit is or whatever it is?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, that, yeah.
Is that representative of like the distance between where the?
Yeah, that's, that's the amount of space between the road, if I understand your question correctly.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand where does this garage start from the edge of the road, right?
Yeah, that's, that, where that, where that storage thing is actually, is just, it's temporary, it's just to put my stuff in it, that's, it's probably gonna be there or even maybe a little further back from that. I'm not positive.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I don't.
But are you keeping that storage shed or are you getting rid of it?
No, 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 that's, I, yeah, actually, if you look at the house I built, that's, I don't really like the mid-guy stores, so, I'm just, yeah. If I can get that out of there tomorrow, I will, you know?
That was my comment, I was curious that was gonna go.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
So, the garage goes up, the storage unit's gone?
It's gone, yeah, yeah, as soon as, it's gone as soon as I can get, if I, if I was able to get a permit and build something to replace that with, of course, I would build a very nice looking, you know, building.
Who actually owns the piece of property that?
The abut?
I think you're, I think you're referring to the piece of property that abuts that's actually where the paved road is, right?
Where the road is.
Yeah, the passes.
Okay.
Yeah, the passes.
So, I'm just, you have an easement to go over her property if your garage?
The whole road thing is, is, I mean, yeah, there's an easement for all of that and they start to drive over it or whatever, so, if I'm backing over it or driving along it, I guess, yeah.
Are you asking who owns the 13?
This piece right here.
The 13 feet, 14 minus one?
Right, yeah.
And who owns that?
And this?
Isn't that part of the way?
Yeah.
It's gotta be part of the way, 'cause he has to cross, that everything goes in his driveway, even now without a garage.
It looks like the way goes down and then gets wider when it changes direction.
But, so, is that this?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
My question is, what if someday she doesn't like you?
What if I don't like him today, right?
That's very true.
I like him better than that storage unit. Very good looks.
If, I guess, I guess, I'm sorry, if, if what you're asking me is I turn in that way, it doesn't really matter, I back in that way, nothing's changed, I still, whether there's a garage in that yard, in my yard, or not, I still turn into that, that's my driveway and I back out of it, I don't really think anything's changed.
Everybody in that area drives towards my road.
I think the concern, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, is you're gonna get really close to property you don't own and if there's an issue, you're gonna, you know, we can grant a special permit.
Permit.
But that doesn't preclude some, a neighbor from saying, listen, I, you know, we got a problem here and then causing you a headache down, down the road, so, I mean, you are technically off of the property, so.
I'm just make, I just, I just want you to be aware of the fact that if you do not own it and all of a sudden, some reason she loses control over the property, whatever, people die, people do all kinds of things. What happens if the next owner says, no, thank you, you cannot access my property?
Well, if we grant the special permit, as long as they're, yeah, I mean, the shed will be fine, but to your point, you may, you may have an access issue, but that's not really.
Yeah.
Hang on, one second, I'm gonna actually have you come up and.
Okay, so, I guess my question would be, so, if I did nothing?
No, let's, let's, I think he just wants you to be aware.
No, no, and I appreciate that, I'm not, I'm just, I'm asking a question, 'cause I don't even, I don't know the answer. Could somebody just say to me tomorrow that I can't drive now? I don't know.
Okay, well, the only reason I'm doing this is because if you turn the house and you face it, the entrance to the garage, so the, parallel to your house facing this way, if in fact something happens, someday, whatever, you could enter the garage without crossing her property. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, so you?
Here.
Well, if you just took the door on the end, like, the other building this way and the door, so, I don't understand, like, I appreciate what you're saying, if we don't come out.
Actually, you know what? Do me a favor.
Yeah, gonna be on mic.
I'm gonna have you hold for a second, okay? And we're gonna, we'll continue the conversation, but since we've already started down, this, you have a question before I?
Yeah, I'd like to understand kind of what's your plan for, you know, water runoff? Is it gonna be a pitch roof and what's your plan for?
Do me a favor, we'll get to that for a second. I'm curious, 'cause I actually do wanna hear from the abutter. I'm assuming there are, we know there's at least a couple of abutters here. Do you have any comments or questions that you would like to ask or make? And if you do, we're gonna have to have you come up here so you can get, so they can hear in the mic for the record. Did you say your name and your address?
I'm Kelly Bass, 13 Dunbar Road.
Okay, so.
I was just more interested in what Jeff was saying about turning the building and access and I'm not sure how it works, but the actual road that goes by our house is technically our land, so I don't really understand how it would change. Everybody has to drive on it anyway, so I guess that was my confusion.
I think Jeff's point was you own the land and we don't know the details of easements or whatnot. I mean, it's not necessarily our burden, but it's.
I don't even know if there's an easement, if any, you.
If you decided to challenge people driving across your land, it could be a headache without us knowing all the details, so.
Right, so people do it now, it's kinda how our neighborhood works and I don't think I can say, okay, I want this piece for my yard and you all can't drive, my neighbors would love me and it, like, it works now as it is. I'm not looking to blow up the world, but I was just more confused because that's how it works now. I didn't know that it could be changed just by changing your mind, I guess.
I'm not saying it could be changed, but I'm.
Okay, making us aware.
Making you aware of the fact that it could, you're investing whatever amount to build this garage. I want you to be able to access the garage at a later date.
Are you opposed or have any concerns about the special permit?
Nope, I was just more concerned for him down the road line, that's, he just made me concerned and people use the road already, so.
That's very refreshing to hear, 'cause usually neighbors who show up aren't very concerned about it. They're usually trying to figure out a way to stop it.
It was real, it's a great idea, I think it's a great, do you guys wanna look at that shed or do you wanna look at a nice garage? Come on over.
The reason I asked, the reason I asked if that thing goes away, if he puts it up, so.
I'm 13.
You got 13?
No, I'm 12, he's 13.
I was gonna say, so this is you and like, you can see the whole street crosses right through your property.
Yeah, exactly, which is what made me really confused when someone wouldn't be able to go on it to get into the driveway. Yeah.
Chances are, you probably can't change it, but I think Mr. Young's point was.
I love that though, it's looking out for people, which is good, so.
I appreciate that.
I was down with that.
Do any other abutters have questions or comments that they wanna make?
We have two supports.
Okay, we got two supports. You got good neighbors. Okay, Jerry, you had a follow-up question regarding?
Just the water management plan and kind of what you're doing, I don't know what the structure looks like outside of a 12 by 20, right?
Yeah, it's not, I don't have a plan, something that goes along with the house. I put a pitch roof on my house in there?
Yeah.
That I built, you see right here?
Yeah.
And it's, it's a pretty okay-looking house and I'm kinda, I'm kinda like that. I would, I would make something that matches that, that looks nice and it's gonna be sized to match it, it's gonna be a real structure, it's not a, gonna be something that's, you know, not eye-appealing, so, I just, just so, I think the idea of turning that is kind of a cool one, but the problem I think it creates is that when you turn it, I think the way that the things, everything's laid out, it's gonna end up just like being in front of my house. That's why, that's why this is laid out on that angle like that, that's the way the engineer did that, 'cause if I turn it and you look at my house, if you look at my house the way it is now, you'd see the garage right here and the only way you could get in is to come around, so I really wouldn't have access to it if I tried to turn it without, I wouldn't be able to park any cars here, so.
I would think it would change it this way.
Oh, 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 well, I think that, I think that creates a bigger, that might create a different type of a problem. This angle that this is put on actually makes it so I can back out and not back into, like, this gardens and there's all this stuff on the other side of the road, so if we were to turn it that way, I think it would make it harder to get in.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just making you aware.
No, and I appreciate that, I really do, I don't, this is not, this isn't my forte, I'm not a, I don't go to planning board meetings and fix all this stuff, I'm just here.
Lucky you.
Trying to, trying, trying to, you know, trying to get, you know, something done for myself here, so, and, you know, I just.
Any other board members have questions? Mark, do you have any comments? Sounds like the neighbors like this option better than your big storage container you have out there, which I don't blame you, I would feel the same way. So, I'm wondering if someone was inclined to make a motion to accept this, if we would condition that, would you ever need to put a storage container on there again?
CNN, the one that has all the questions, I'll make a motion, we accept this petition and with the condition that the storage facility goes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not to come back.
As a matter of fact, I, like you said, I'd get rid of it today, it's just got, I guess.
Can you just explain that, like, will be removed at the completion or?
How about if the condition is the storage container will be removed at the completion of the garage?
I actually have to find a place to put my stuff and move it before I can.
You're probably, yeah.
When I can get a permit to build what I have.
You probably can't do them both at the same time, so, rather than give you a definitive exact date, if we say by the time the garage is done, it's gonna be gone before then anyways.
Oh, it's gonna be gone, yes, sir, it will be gone.
Does that sound good to the neighbors?
Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is that clear? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Good luck.
That'll be gone.
And the same parameters apply that Kathy told the prior one, 20 days and you'll get a call when you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're welcome, take care. All right. Next agenda item is the, I think it's, yeah, 113 Staple Shore Road, so, I'm not sure, do I have this one applied or did I get rid of it?
Jeffrey Bell, trustee?
Yeah, okay. All right, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May 18th, 7:00 PM, Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Jeffrey Bell, trustee, and Lori, I'm gonna butcher this, I apologize, Bacaracus Bell, trustee. Special permit is requested under 6.1.3 and 7.4 to raise a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and construct a new dwelling on a new foundation located on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property site is 113 Staple Shore Road and is owned by Jeffrey C. Bell Living Trust and Lori A. Bacaracus Bell Living Trust. Hopefully, I didn't embarrass myself too much there. Of course, you said perfect, I'm guessing you're not Lori, so, uh, let's see, we have a couple of memos here that I wanna read into the record. We have one from the Board of Health, received on May 10th. At their May 18th meeting, we received a copy of the petition for hearing for 113 Staple Shore Road. The Board of Health has reviewed the plan to accompany a ZBA petition dated 4/26/23 for 113 Staple Shore Road and the architectural plans from South Coast and Associates dated 8/23/22. The architectural plans are for a dwelling that would be defined as a four-bedroom dwelling according to the Title V definition. Because the den slash office on Sheet 8.3 is considered a bedroom, the septic system is designed for a three-bedroom dwelling, therefore, the proposed house would not be compliant with the existing septic system. The Board of Health recommends to redesign the proposed house for a three-bedroom dwelling, but hang on, we have an updated memo dated May 17th from the Board of Health to advise this board that we received a copy of the architectural plans for South Coast Associates 113 Staple Shore Road with Sheet 8.3 revised as of 5/16. The revised sheet has, the revised, the revised sheet 8.3 has changed the size of the opening to the dining room, which was previously labeled den/office, so the room would no longer be considered a bedroom. Thus, the revised architectural plans for a three-bedroom dwelling would be in compliance with the existing septic system. Therefore, the Board of Health has no objections to revise proposed three-bedroom dwelling provided the changes are made according to the revised 8.3 sheet dated 5/16/2023. The other memo we have is from the Planning Board, dated May 12th. At their May 11th meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing for the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. So the issue with the septic for the proposed dwelling that the Board of Health had has gone away because the architectural designs have been changed and it's back to a three-bedroom. Okay, who is going to present on behalf of the petitioner? Come on up, name for the record, you know the drill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers. If you don't mind, I'm just gonna grab the-
Go for it.
So this is, we're asking for a special permit. This is the existing structure here, so we have the existing situation over here and what's being proposed on this side of the plan. The, the, we're asking for a special permit to raise the existing house and build a new house and essentially very close to the same location. Again, you've already mentioned it's an existing non-conforming lot. So this, this, we've actually, in the proposed structure, we've actually increased the, the side setbacks slightly on this side. Decreases on this side, but it meets the side setback requirement over there. And it gets a little bit closer to the road too, but it meets the front setback requirement. Do, what, and what, what happens is in this structure, you can see this is like a little bump out here. This structure is slightly larger in footprint than the existing structure here. So that changes the lot coverage. So what we've done to keep the lot coverage the same, since this footprint is increasing, we've taken away some of the driveway to accommodate that, so we don't have an increase in the lot coverage.
So you get a new structure going up, you're not increasing the lot structure and you're actually making it less non-conforming by stretching off the setback on the left.
Yeah, there's one situation that I just wanna point out to be perfectly clear. There's a five-foot, I'm sorry, I need my glasses, five-point, 5.4 foot setback to the back. So in other words, towards the water. And in the proposed, what, what happened in this, this is, this structure is built in the flood zone and it's built too low in the flood zone. This structure has to be built to conform to the, to FEMA regs. And so it was raised up about three feet. And you'll, you may see that one dimension is a 4.2 to the corner of the step, the bottom step. So we had to add a step to be able to get up higher, we had to add a couple steps actually, but so that, that, that actual structure is, is about one foot closer to the, to the water on that side.
But that structure was to be able to meet FEMA.
Exactly, exactly, we just had to get more steps in there to, to get up for that extra three feet.
We all need to get more steps.
So we're raising it and we're raising it, and the other raise.
Okay, questions from the board?
Of the steps, the full width of the structure there?
They're not being shown as that right now, the steps go, so that's a deck, it's, what is, what is- Called out as is a rear deck with a balcony overhang, so the balcony's gonna extend out over the top of the deck. So that's this part, and then these steps come around and they don't go to the full, the full width.
I do have one question, sake yet, could the steps go on the side of the porch to not go closer to the water? I understand the look they're trying to go for, but-
Um, I don't, well, the way the house is designed now, they cannot, they-
If they could not, and then I would, I believe we'd be able to set that on that side.
Yeah, it depends on which side, yeah. If we came this way, they would, they would extend out closer to this way. We, we took, we looked at trying to push the house up closer to the road to, to make that happen, but we have the set, we have to maintain the setbacks from the structure, the septic tank. So that's as far up as we could push it.
Follow-up question on it?
No, I mean, it doesn't much matter to me, it's six, no, it doesn't, it's not, you know, it doesn't matter to me, honestly. It's the same either way. We're on a conservation board, so I can't comment on being close to the wall and further than water, it is, but it is.
We did discuss this with the building inspector and he said, I forget the term that he used, but it's a, he didn't consider that act, an actual part of the structure. He considered it, even though you, if we did, we do need to show it as a setback to that step. He said it was like an accessory to the structure, but some, some such term is that.
That's the term they would've used, yeah.
Yes.
Which is my opinion, I concur with our building commissioner on steps. Unless to Chris's point, it's like the entire length of it now is-
Well, that's what it looks like, it's the width of the deck, so it's-
You can see how they return back into the deck.
Yeah, it, it comes in a little bit.
They're wide.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, it's almost like stadium seating off the deck.
At the water's edge.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Anyone else, Mark, do you have any?
Have you filed for the Conservation Commission receipt of their conditions?
Yeah, we're aware that that's going to have to happen, of course, but-
That was kind of my concern, but we're on a conservation board, so.
That's right.
I just was thinking, in conservation's eyes, they might wanna, I understand that it's gonna now go closer to the side property line, but it's not closer to the water.
But you could go to the other side.
Well, that's not what, what we're asking for this, and it's our, the house has been designed, so. I, I don't think we're willing to put this, the stairs on the side unless you'd like to make that change.
That's not the way it's designed, no, we're currently moving closer to the 116 entrance.
Right, and especially since we got, yeah, especially since we got that opinion.
When you move forward for the forward, closer to the septic tank.
We can't, yes, that's not a, that's not an option, so. Yeah, especially since we got that opinion from the building inspector, that it's not really considered a part of the actual structure, but a accessory to it, so. We'd like to not change it, if that's okay with the, with the board.
Well, to, I think a couple of folks' points at this point, including our, including Mark, Concom.
Might, it may, it may not, that's, but that's your deal. Then we'll have to cross that bridge.
For them anyways, he's not gonna issue the building permit based on the proximity of the water without you going to see them, so.
What about shortening the deck?
Well, again, it's exactly the same situation, the house has already been designed, there's an overhang, so it's not just shortening a deck, it's shortening the deck and the structure, the interior, the structure on the upper floor. It's literally a step, it's one step that is exceeding and extending into, you know, towards the water, so.
It just may open up doors for, I don't know.
We don't set precedent, remember? So, any comments from anyone in the audience? Any other questions?
Yeah, conservation did have an issue with it, what would your, in your back pocket solution be?
We, I don't know, we'd have to discuss that with the owner, the architect, see what options we have, you know?
Well, what we could do is, not that we necessarily need to do it, but if it puts everyone's minds at ease a little more, you know you have to file an order with Concom anyways, we can condition it on Concom's approval, so. You can't do anything without-
Don't have a problem, we have to, we, we know we have to get that from-
Concom's responsible for the water, if everyone's, that's their concern.
I agree.
Put it in there, just, it's kind of belt and suspenders, because they're gonna, they're gonna do it anyways. They gotta go perform anyways, that may make everybody feel a little better, but, just a suggestion. So if anyone would like to make a motion, feel free, if not.
Your turn.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal based on approval of conservation.
Grant the special permit with the condition of conservation approval.
Sure.
I may, I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We don't need to explain anything to you, you know the drill.
Yeah.
Okay, our next agenda item, I am going to step down as chair.
Do you have any correspondence with this one? I don't have any correspondence.
I gave you the whole packet, man.
There's nothing in here.
There you go. Take mine, I'm sure you're gonna cheer this one.
Where is, okay, we have some planning board.
You have the planning board and I have the Board of Health.
Okay.
And you have the-
Yep. Next hearing is the, uh, Lakeville Nursery Development LLC at 4 Precinct Street. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May 18, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC, who is proposing an auto service which requires a special permit under 4.1.2 and 7.4. The property site is 5 Harding Street and is located in a business zone. The application and sort of documents can be viewed in the planning department by appointment or the Town of Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals webpage.
Robert, are you representing?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman, for your record, my name is Robert Mather. I represent the applicant, Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC. My expert with me is same as before, Bob Forbes from Zenith. The site in question is number 5 Harding Street. Easy to describe, it borders the, it's right at the border of Lakeville and Middlebury. As a matter of fact, the boundary line of this property is the Pecore Brook, which is the, the boundary line. We're asking for a special permit to allow automotive repair facility in the business district. So if you look at the bylaw, there's a section that says auto or boat sales, rentals or service is a use permitted in the business district by special permit. A little history is necessary here to understand this, this project. The site, you may know it as the old Lakeville Nursery. Those of you that are a little bit older, like myself, might remember it as the Hots Mink Farm, which is what it was originally. The, what the history of this, this began with my client in October of 2019. And at that point, he prepared plans for contractor bays, went to the planning board for site plan review and was granted approval of the site plan in October of 2019. Because of, well, as you know, shortly after that, COVID, because of COVID and other miscellaneous issues, the site was not, not constructed, but ready to go at this point in time. What's interesting to note is in 2019, auto boat sales rental service was a permitted use in business. Now, I'm not raising that to say that we're grandfathered, because we're not. Getting site plan approval does not, it's not like a special permit. It doesn't give you any, any protection against the, against the zone change. But when my client went to the planning board, it was for contractor bays, which could have included at the time auto repair. So it's important to note that at this point, with the exception of auto repair, my client could construct the building tomorrow. It's approved, it can be used for all sorts of contractor bays, a plumber, an electrician, well driller, has been interested in it, automobile stereo, virtually any type of contractor at bay. So, but what brings us here is that my client was approached by, that, as you well know, not too far down Route 44, there's several auto dealers, new car dealers. One of them is looking to purchase the, the site, the whole site. And to have their, apparently at their existing site, they need more room for their repair facility. They wanna have an offsite, and, and I understand now that this has become a little bit of a new thing for the dealers because they don't wanna utilize their dealership space for repairs. They can utilize it for, you know, as more showroom, more, more vehicles. They wanna have an annex to their repair facility. So they contacted my client, said, we'd like to buy it, we'd just like to know that auto repair is allowed. My client, remembering what it used to say, and not what it currently says, said, sure, no problem, I'll get a letter from the building commissioner saying that auto repair is allowed. And of course, the building commissioner pointed out that this got changed. It got changed in 2022. And what the change was, it was, it was part of several changes, because previously, as far as auto boat sales rental service, it was a little bit different. In business district, it was allowed by right. In, in the industrial district, it was allowed by special permit. And I do have some personal knowledge on the change, because I, I used to, I guess I still do. So there's a committee called the ZEBRAC Committee, the Zoning Bylaw Review Advisory Committee, that would review the bylaws and recommend certain changes. And one of the changes that we recommended is a two-part change. We kind of figured that maybe having auto or boat sales, large dealerships, was not really appropriate in the industrial zone. We have a limited amount of industrial zone in Lakeville. It's not a good use for it, it should be in the, in the business zone. And that because auto or boat sales, these could be very large facilities. Maybe it shouldn't be just allowed by right with no regulation, it should be by special permit. So that's what, what the change was. The Zoning Board Review Committee no longer active, and why is that? Because, well, we don't really need it anymore, we have a town planner. And that's what the town planner does. And that was one of the first things, I believe, that was spurred on by the, the town planner to make that, that change. So what I, first, the, the dealership, if they buy the property, it's, let's see, let's get the layout up here. It's on the other side, yeah, I'm sorry. This is the plan that was approved by the, the planning board. Contractor base, 21, am I correct? 21 bays in a kind of an L shape. It's very likely that if the dealership buys it, they'll probably change the configuration of the building. But that's not our issue tonight. If they do, they gotta come back to the planning board for site plan review. We're just looking to get the use for auto repair allowed. So I'd like to ask Bob at this time, because Bob, we have the benefit, Bob did the site plan approval process back in 2019. And I'd like him to go through what he did and note that when it was designed, it was, auto repair was contemplated at that point. So the original building that was approved with drainage and, and everything was, was contemplated and it was designed for it. So Bob, can you run through the, the plan, please? Again, my name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
As Bob mentioned, I did this design and helped with the permitting of the whole process. Uh, just real quickly, um, we, obviously, this is Route forty-four up here. We have an entrance, snakes through a couple of wetlands, we just barely made it through there. Twenty-four foot wide driveway, uh, as required. Once we get into this area, we have thirty feet going, thirty foot wide going around the building. We've set up for parking in, uh, offices in the front of these, and then around the back, it's set up for garage, uh, overhead doors, so you could pull a vehicle in and, do whatever you have to do, whatever contractors would use that for. The site is, um, this site is designed, all the drainage, uh, the site itself, with the consideration, as Bob said, for this to be potentially used as a number of different things, but including, um, um, auto repair. Anywhere, by building code, anywhere where you have an overhead door where you can drive a, um, a vehicle into the building, you have to have floor drains and going to, leading to a tight tank. We have this, Pecoy Brook is, as Bob mentioned, is the, the town line, the separation between, and that's, that's represented as this line here. It's also, uh, what's known as a cold water fishery, uh, which is a special, it gets, uh, special consideration when you're doing a stormwater design. So, uh, because of that, this site had to be designed to a higher standard than a typical site. So there's, uh, you know, there, there were special treatment, um, BMPs, Economic Best Management Practices, that we had to incorporate into this. So not only is it designed for, um, a use such as, um, auto repair, but it's designed to a much further, uh, a much higher level than a typical site would be. Um, just, and one, a couple of quick other notes we have, so actually, if I could go back to, this, this, all these, uh, this hatching here, this represents all the wetlands around the property. And, um, this happened to be portions of this site were in a natural heritage endangered species program area. So there, there were just about, anything beyond what's the development portion of the site had, a conservation restriction had to be put on it. So it can't, it can't spread out in any direction. There's anything that potentially would be done, it's either gonna stay the same building or, as Bob mentioned, if it does change, everything will be done inside this footprint of what's already proposed, because we simply don't have the option anymore of doing anything different. This, I like this aerial view, just because it shows you what's surrounding it, and which is essentially nothing. This is all wetlands, all on this side of the property. Here's Route forty-four. The closest, um, house is this one on Cross Street. It's four hundred and eighty feet away from our development, from our building. It's more than four hundred and eighty feet from here to here. This area in between is a, uh, turtle nesting area that had to be constructed by the, uh, by the owner of the property, and that can never be changed. So there's no chance that anything additional can extend in this direction, as I, as I'm saying. So, uh, that's a, got a nice turtle nesting area there, um, and all these wetlands around that will prohibit, prohibit from expansion. Uh, this is a new, just to orient everybody, this is a new three lot development that was done by the owner of this property. So, uh, it doesn't show on this photograph, but there's a house here now and one here and one here. That's pretty much it.
So Bob does point out one thing, that it's, it's absolutely understood that this is gonna be the only entrance and exit to the, to the property. We can't go out the Cross Street, don't want to go out the Cross Street, um, and, um, it would be out to, um, to Route forty-four only. You, you received a letter from the, um, the planning board.
Yes, I was gonna read that in.
Okay. Um, I, I'll read it if you want, because I'd like to, I'd like to address it.
Right ahead.
Says, "At the Thursday, May eleventh meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board had some concerns regarding the petition and recommended the following. There should be no public access to the back of the building. Parking for automotive repair customers should be clearly designated for safety purposes. The site should have adequate signage, which indicates the above." I don't believe the board fully understood what we're gonna do here. This is not a contractor's yard. There's not gonna be equipment out there, there's no work that's done, um, out there. All the work is inside, in the, in the units. They were concerned, I listened, I didn't go to the meeting, but I listened to it on, um, on tape. They were concerned about safety, that they talked about forklifts, um, welding, not happening. There's no work that's done here. Need access to the back, because that's where the bays, um, enter. So for example, um, if there's a business of stereo repair, a stereo installation, customers drive in, um, go, pull right in, go up to the waiting room and, and, and wait for it. Now, you, you heard me say that the dealership might change the configuration of the building. You're probably saying, why didn't you come into us with the new configuration? Well, because if the dealership doesn't buy the property, um, there's no guarantee that this deal is going to be consummated. My client still wants to use this. And again, remember, he can construct it tomorrow and use it tomorrow. The only thing he wouldn't be able to have is any, um, auto repair in it. So I need to convince you that automotive repair should be allowed. So if you look at the section of the bylaw that deals with this, seven point four point six, you know, it just briefly recites that, um, special permit for auto boat sales, um, rentals or, or service, um, uh, must be compatible with the surrounding areas, subject to site plan review by the, the planning board. I believe this site is about the most compatible that you could, you could find. In Lakeville, as you know, we basically have three business areas, three areas that are zoned. We have Main Street, uh, Route one oh five, we have portions of, of Route eighteen, and we have this relatively small section of, of Route forty-four. I believe that one of the reasons why it was changed to special permit is because some of these other areas, especially Main Street, is a lot more sensitive as to what might go there. I would offer that this is the perfect site for auto repair. As a matter of fact, if auto repair was not appropriate for this site, there's no other site in town that it, that it would be. It clearly fits in within the neighborhood. There's, um, the Millennium Park, the space building, the industrial area, um, up here, um, it's, it's basically all, uh, commercial. And I think that this is the most appropriate site, as I said, in Lakeville for this, for this use. So we would like to ask the board just to allow, in addition to all those uses that are already permitted, to allow, um, auto repair. Again, if we go with the dealer, um, we'll be back before the town, because I think what they want to do is, instead of having an L shape, same footprint, same square footage, but probably more something like, like that, which would be appropriate. And I think, as you know, um, dealership repair facilities, this day and age, are pretty nice facilities. You walk in those, you feel like you're walking into a hospital. They're very well maintained, um, there's no vehicles parked outside. They're, uh, it's an excellent use of the property. So based on that, I would think it would be appropriate for the board to, to issue the special permit. We would respectfully, um, request that the board does issue a special permit, just to expand the use to include, um, auto repair. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Would the new building consist of the second floor?
No.
Office space, no?
No. No, one, uh, one floor. And we, you know, if, if dealership doesn't buy it, my client's gonna proceed with the kind of use of the, of the property, which is a, which is a very popular use, um, because you have people that have small businesses, they can't afford to buy a lot in a business district and have their business there. These are, these are perfect for them. Um, it can be a, a small business, it can be a larger business, they can buy two, or use two or three units in it. So it's a, it's a very desirable use of the property, including auto repair.
Before you sit down, Bob, I'll read you the Board of Health, maybe you have any comments on this. This is from Board of Health, uh, dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'll just read you the highlight, the, um. "We received a copy of the petition for hearing for five Harding Street. The Board of Health has reviewed the site plan for Lot one and Lot one part of five Harding and thirty-nine Cross Street, revised ten twenty-one nineteen, which shows proposed commercial building. That will be connected to the, connected to municipal water on Harding Street. The upland area of the lot is sufficient to install a septic system for the commercial building, thus the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed commercial building." So they, Board of Health has nothing. You have anything else to add, Mark?
No, I don't.
Does anybody in the audience have something to say? Come up and identify yourself and...
Yeah, my name is Wayne Cargosa. On Free Cross Street, on that closest house that you were just talking about. This is literally in our backyard. I kind of beg to differ with that being a perfect use for auto repair business. That's a very fragile piece of property there. He talked about the turtles, that's right behind my shed, they've built an area there, and two brooks. These, these people are gonna be changing oils and transmission fluids and all that type of, of stuff in this building. That makes me a little nervous about the area. I guess it's gonna be in the same footprint, so that's a good thing. They're not gonna be expanding, they can't go out of that, that footprint, is that what you're asking?
Do you know what was here, proposed here before this was proposed?
Excuse me?
Do you know what was proposed prior to this?
Yes, it was a, um, storage units.
Before that?
Before that, it was gonna be a, uh...
Market basket.
Yeah.
This is a far cry smaller development.
Right. Yeah, and they found that they couldn't, they couldn't use all that land that they wanted to. But that, that's all I have to say, I'm just concerned about...
Okay.
Yeah, hazardous fluids that are gonna be used in that building.
Well, they have to, they have to comply with state regs, so...
That, I, I don't know anything about that.
Right. Does anybody else have anything to offer? Any questions?
Yeah, one question for Bob. When this change was made to kind of separate out the, the auto repair from the other business zone activities that were given by right, what were some of the things that were brought out as considerations of things that should be conditioned to limit certain things that are specific to auto repair versus any other business that could kind of be in there?
Well, not really any, because remember, when it was designed, that was contemplated. It was designed to have all types of business, including, um, automotive repair. We, it was engineered that way. Jeff points out that, that, that those uses are very highly regulated. If the board can think of any things that need to be regulated, we consider them, but I, I really can't come up with any.
Actually, that's one thing I forgot to mention is, um, so I understand this is a dealer's yard, so they operate slightly different than if it was a regular garage. But oftentimes, there's still significantly damaged vehicles, they're waiting for parts, so on and so forth. They're stored outside because they want the bays for other uses. So I think, uh, um, there should be some sort of limitation or, or condition placed upon the outdoor storage of vehicles, or the length of time that they, they are stored outside. So, uh, for example, wrecked vehicles in many other communities I've been in, there's been issues with garages, having wrecked vehicles and waiting for title changes and having only, you stay there, you know, for months and months and, and, uh, being in an environmentally sensitive area, even though it's well-designed, I think that, um, in this particular case, having some sort of limitation placed on, on that specific, not the, the overall use, but that little portion of, of, of vehicles, um, being stored there for, for repairs, um, might be a wise thing to...
Well, most, this is from dealing with this, most car dealerships really don't deal with wrecked vehicles. They basically, they go to the insurance company, go to the auction, and they're gone, and they go to, uh, people who specialize in repairing vehicles. Mainly what you're gonna get there is, in my opinion, you're gonna get oil changes, tune-ups, et cetera, that type of operation. I don't think it was, if it's a dealership, I don't think they're going to, you know, spend all their time fixing vehicles when they, basically, they just auction them off.
Yeah, and I, I would agree, if you, if you go up Route forty-four, that's what, six, seven, eight dealerships there, right around back and look at the, um, facilities, there's nothing outside.
There's nothing.
They don't keep anything outside. If they're working on a vehicle, it stays basically, um, inside. Now, they may pull it out during the day for pickup later, um, that's very common.
That's different.
That's different, yeah. I don't think it's been a problem for these types of use, uses.
So Mark, there's something more of a question for you. If we were to allow the auto repair there, what would then happen if it gets purchased and they propose kind of a new design and everything, would it then go back to planning when you guys could place any depth of restrictions now that you know how the site would be used?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So the redesigned site would have to go back to the planning board for a new site plan approval. And the planning board could attach certain conditions based on the use, as it would be discussed in the new site design or layout, so...
Right, and, and I believe that would be the appropriate time to do so, because that's what, that's what site plan review does. And, um, if the dealership buys it, they're not gonna use that L shape, makes no sense.
No, they would, they would never do that.
But again, they won't consider it unless they know that auto repair is allowed.
That's right.
I think I would say one thing in regards to what you guys mentioned. I think you would rather have a dealership repair shop here versus contractor bays, because I feel like a dealership, like he says, is more regulated, they really don't leave cars outside. If this is contractor bays, I'm in a community, my business where is contractor bays, and people work late hours of the night, they're not really regulated. You can't tell me that if that's contractor bays and a mechanic's in there, you're gonna have cars sitting outside that are probably in more disrepair than a dealership would. I think, I, I understand your concerns, but I kind of agree with this, that a dealership would be less of an impact on the environment than contractor bays from a small business.
Well, this is the first time that we're hearing about a dealership moving in there. We thought that it was gonna be a contractor bay, that you would be just going and then not using it for business, just as storage and that type of thing, so we're a little bit surprised to see, to hear about a change, so... But as long as the conservation area is still gonna be protected with the turtles, and it's gonna be closer toward forty-four than Cross Street, then that's, that's not a bad...
Absolutely, and restriction on not going outside that area, restriction on that being the only entrance or access to the property is, is perfectly acceptable. It would be an immense difficulty to get access out to... It would be an immense difficulty to get access out to Cross Street, but I have no interest in it, none whatsoever.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if the board grants a permit to the applicant and it's sold, would the new owner have to come back to this board also?
No. Permit goes with the land.
It doesn't matter whose name it's on it?
At least, oh, well...
Bob, am I right, permit goes with the land?
It would go, it would go with the land. I mean, there, with, with special permits, you can condition it on a particular user, but that would be very unacceptable really to anyone because they're not going to build a facility and then they're not be able to sell, which is why you, why we have the set plan review process. They look at it without regard to what dealer owns it or who owns it, they look at the facility so that whoever owns it has to meet these requirements. But yes, it would run with the land.
Any other questions? I'm open for somebody to do something.
I have one final question.
Sure.
If by chance they did not change the site, which we don't know for sure, how do we know that we don't want to include what the planning board has suggested?
Well, I mean, I hope you understand that that's impossible.
Yeah.
That's impossible to do for this type of use with, with contractor bays. If you want to condition that there's no work done outside, and, and that's fine because it's all going to be inside. But I think, you know, we, we just can't, and I kind of wish I had gone to the planning board to explain that to them, and I think they'll understand because their concerns were forklifts. Well, there's safety. That's obviously a proper concern, but it's not happening.
What are the hours of operation?
We, we weren't looking for, you know, this is in, right in the heart of the business district on Route 44, and we weren't looking for any limitation on hours. Again, it's, it's the perfect site for a repair facility.
I think it's a double edged sword because if a dealership does not buy it, then it goes to contractor bays, and now you can have automotive repair in the contractor bays.
That's correct.
Seems like we've moved a wild way of...
Correct, which I don't love that because I personally would rather a dealership go in there, but if we grant it and they don't buy it, then now Joe's Automotive can open a automotive shop there and you know he's going to keep his cars outside and all that. That's just my opinion on that.
Well, put a restriction that no cars that are being worked on can be kept outside. Everything is designed to be inside here.
I think the concern that was down the road, if they don't, like, the dealership takes a pass and then somebody else comes in and you've got five independent auto repair shops.
That's my concern.
Right.
But I ask, what's the problem, really? What, what about that worries you? Environmentally, no issues, it's fully regulated. It, all work is done inside and nothing is done outside. Is it really any different if they're repairing, changing oil, repairing your vehicle, then installing a stereo? Yes, maybe, maybe environmental issues, but that, those are highly regulated.
Yeah, well, I wasn't making a comparison to stereo equipment, but it's back to the point of storing vehicles outside, you've got leaking, you know, it's all like the dealership getting it in, getting it out. If you have some independent contractor auto repair shop, he's, he's got a, he's got a pipeline of vehicles in the, in the parking lots, like what precautions are there to contain whatever is leaking?
Well, I mean, that is regulated as far as storing on the asphalt, but if you want to put a provision in that if the entire facility is not used for a, a auto repair service, that there be no storing of vehicles that are worked on outside, I don't think we'd have a problem with that. And I think that's your, your main...
Yeah, I mean, I get the image of the, the car dealership repair shop, like they're, they're beautiful, like their glass walls, they're like, the, the concrete floors are cleaner than my own house and...
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
But like that, that would be very nice. It's the alternative if the dealership doesn't follow through.
But I think what you're concerned is, is not necessarily what's inside or what's outside here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think inside is good, you're containing the activity, you're, you're muffling the noise, you're limiting contamination. Yeah, so the outside, I guess, would be the concern.
Yeah.
Bob, what regulates what can be done in these bays now?
Nothing.
That's my thing, like where's the regulation done? Where's, who regulates this stuff? There's no regulations.
I mean, there's, I mean, it's not like it's any Plaza even, right?
There's regulation about, about disposal of, of fluids and, and floor drains, and those are highly regulated.
So this was approved before I came here, so I don't believe, I don't know, but I don't believe there's any restrictions on the hours of operation of the bays, so if, you know, some welders gets back from a job and he has something to make for the next day to install, and he wants to stay up till 3:00 in the morning, he could do that. So, you know, or if some people, the electricians are all leaving at 5:00 in the morning and they're showing up to get supplies and stuff in the van out of the bay, then, you know, there's no restrictions on, on that.
So all that's allowed by right right now?
As of right now, yes.
Yeah, for me, I wouldn't find a concern of that really at all, you know, people work early or late. Just for me would be the alternative to not go through, it opens the door for nine different one man bands working on cars, and we got a mechanic where I am, and he's just shits everywhere, I should see his yard. And who's going to regulate that? No one does. He's got fifteen vehicles open with full tag in, and no one's regulating that.
I mean, I know the board has, has granted permits before, not this particular issue, where you put restrictions on what can be done outside. If you, no working on vehicles outside, no storage of, of wrecked vehicles or vehicles, you know, other than storing for, to be picked up, and if they don't, they're violating zoning, and they'll get a, they'll get a stop work order. So again, if you want to put some restrictions that if the entire facility is not used for auto repair, it would be clear that there be no vehicles worked on.
Outside the building or stored?
Stored outside the building, other than, let's say, for next day pickup, for example. That's not a problem because that's not contemplated. It's like when the board's saying, can't get around back, this is not going to be work area, it's not going to be a contractor yard, there's not going to be forklifts, there's not going to be backup alarms going off. This is just going to be, if it's not the contract, it's going to be entrance to the, to the individual units. All the work is inside.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve, and any conditions that you guys would like to entertain to add on to it. I just don't see, the businesses that could go there now could be just as unregulated, so to me it's...
Correct. Yeah, I, I would definitely agree that those would be, you know, ideal in my opinion, but I don't know about you guys, putting a regular, some sort of, something on that states no storing of wrecked vehicles, rain repair, something like that?
Okay, why don't you make the motion to approve with the condition that no vehicles are to be stored outside or worked on. Everything will be inside, and when the vehicle is completed, it must leave the yard within 24 hours. That be fair?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I would put vehicle and equipment, just to cover...
Okay.
Diesel mechanic, what have you.
So it, it is interesting to point out that currently, these could be rented to contractors, excavators, who can work on their, their own vehicles.
Yes.
In there. You know, the difference is, is bringing the public in. That's an allowed use right now.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? The motion was, yeah, right, I'll second it. Right, the motion, then we have... Kathy, did you read all the... Okay, let me read it to us so we know.
The no storing, no outside storage of vehicles, no vehicles to be worked on outside, and vehicles that are completed will leave the lot in 24 hours.
Is that good? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Who was named, Jerry? Okay. John, you're...
I'm standing.
Standing. Okay.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Word to one. John, back to you.
Okay, uh, let's see, misplaced my agenda, but I think I can go from memory here. We do have some minutes to approve, be March 30th, 2023 minutes. I believe everyone was against this one, correct?
Yes.
Yep, so if we had a chance to review them, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 30th.
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Any other business to come before this board this evening? I don't hear any, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:24 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.